Hi, I'm Paul Santanello. Welcome to Long Meadow Community Television, a public forum for our school committee candidates in this election cycle. With us tonight, we have combined, there's seven people running for, between the one year and three year terms, and so we have a mix here tonight because of scheduling. And who we have with us this evening for the one, running for the one-year seat is Tim Mitchell and Kevin Shea, and running for the three-year seat are Susan Bell and Jamie Hench. So, welcome, everybody.
Thank you.
What we're going to do is, in the format, is you have a minute and a half open, minute and a half closed, and we have two minutes for answers. So, if you want to start with your opening statement, Susan, then we're going to go down the line for each subsequent question. You're on.
Okay. Well, thank you for having me, and thank you for making this available to the public. I'm Suzie Bell. I'm on the school committee currently as an appointed member back in March, and I've lived in Long Meadow for about six years. And I'm interested in running for the three-year seat because I've had a great deal of experience in public education. In my previous life, I was a superintendent of schools, an administrator of high school, middle school, administrator of curriculum, instruction, and assessment, as well as a school counselor at the, at the high school level. And I've really gained a lot of knowledge about schools. I currently work for a nonprofit organization that supports schools in making significant change because we know that schools are sort of still in the, in, kind of in the old ages because 120 years ago, our schools were built on a system that really is out of date for today. And so, I have made it my mission in, in life and in my career to help students, help their families, but help students in particular, really accomplish their dreams and accomplish their goals. And I want to help the Long Meadow schools to, to do just that for all of the students here. I'm, I have two young children, and one who will be entering the class of 2032 in the kindergarten class next year, and another who's currently in third grade. And so, I have, I have a lot to commit, as well as I certainly want to help all of the students in our town achieve their dreams. So, I'm hoping that I can do just that for three years.
Thank you, Susan. Tim?
Hey, thank you very much, Paul. I'm Tim Mitchell, and I recently moved to Long Meadow, in fact, in August of 2018. So, we're enjoying our time here. And I, when the opportunity came for some people to come onto the school board, I realized there was going to be school committee, and there were going to be several opportunities there. I said, "Well, this might be an opportunity for me to get involved." And I chose to run for the one-year because I knew that it would be maybe easier to convince the voters to give me a chance for one year, and then they could always reevaluate after that one year was done. And, you know, the things I feel like I bring to the table is, I have 15 years of business experience. I was, I'm an accountant, CPA, and worked in business for a long time, and primarily did a lot of internal management, budgeting, and forecasting for the companies that I work for. And then I moved into academia about 15 years ago, and, and I am a professor at UMass, and I am the associate chair of the accounting department at the Eisenberg School. And I, you know, feel like I have a lot of experience in administration, a lot of experience and theoretical knowledge. I do all my researches about budgeting and incentives and how to motivate employees. And so, I have a lot of theoretical knowledge, as well as practical experience in those areas, and I'd like to bring that to the school committee.
All right. Thank you, Tim. Kevin?
Paul, thanks for inviting me. It's, it's wonderful to, to be able to talk to members of the community and, and share our ideas for what we want to see in the future for our schools. Just to let everybody know a little bit about me, my wife and I moved to Long Meadow in 2002. We have two kids who are in the high school now. Our son is a senior, he's going to be attending WPI next year. Our soft, our, our daughter is a sophomore. And so, we've had a wonderful run in the Long Meadow schools, and it's just been a pleasure to live in town and to see how our kids have grown. And I really see this as an opportunity for me to give back to the town, help others have the great experience that we've had and that our kids have had. In my professional life, I'm a chemistry professor at Smith College. I've been at Smith since 2000, and it's just been a wonderful place to be. I've learned a lot about education. I've learned a lot about how to help students succeed at the college level, and I think that gives me a really, some insight into what our students should be doing in elementary, middle, and high school. It's just been a wonderful place to be, and I really enjoy thinking about education, and I've enjoyed being a member of the school committee for the last couple of months, thinking about how the experience I've had in the classroom and as a leader at Smith can translate into work in Long Meadow. As the chair of the chemistry department, and presently the, the faculty director of the science center at Smith, I've been in leadership positions, and I see this as an opportunity to bring some of my leadership skills to Long Meadow, and to help out with our students and with our administrators to continue to improve the Long Meadow schools.
Thank you, Kevin. And we have Jamie. Jamie?
Yep. Thank you very much for having us, and it's our pleasure to participate in this. I just wanted to clarify that I'm running for a three-year term.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to. Did I say one year?
Nope. Three-year term, but I'm one of three individuals, myself, Suzie, and Kevin Rysick, are, we are all vying for two positions, just to clarify for everyone out there, because I know it is confusing with one-year and three-year. So, both Suzie and I are vying for those two, two positions where three individuals are participating in that race. But I have lived in town now for over 15 years. I have four kids within the system at Williams School, as well as at Center School. So, one of my children are at Williams, and three of them are at Center, a fourth grader, a first grader, and kindergartner. And I just was very excited to get involved in this back in February, when the opportunity arose where I could be a part of a committee, a board, within the municipality, and really, you know, give, give back to the community and get involved within the community. And it just was a great opportunity to jump in. From an experience standpoint, I have a lot of experience, both within higher education, I did work within athletics at the college level back a while ago, but I also have corporate experience, both at the boardroom level, as well as just management level. And now, I am a financial advisor, so I am also participating in the corporate world on an individual standpoint, which is very exciting to be, have the opportunity to continue where I am with the school committee for the next three years.
Thank you. Okay. So, we're going to start with the first question, Tim. You'll, you'll start this one, the answer first. We've had two town meetings called because of, in my opinion, lack of communication throughout our town. How do you go about improving communication to residents as a member of the school committee?
Well, I think that, you know, it's, it's, I'll be honest, it's tough for me to say, you know, exactly how you go about improving, because I haven't been here long enough to be really knowledgeable about what currently goes on in the communications between the school committee and the town, and where the town feels like those have fallen short. And, you know, I feel like that there, there just needs to be a consistent, you know, giving of information, but obviously, there's things that have to be done, you know, behind the scenes to take care of the business that has to be done, and, and the administration on a daily basis, and a monthly basis. So, you know, it's getting the information out there when it needs to be disseminated to the, to the, to the community.
Okay. Thank you. Kevin?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we need to work harder on, on getting the information out. I think right now, we have a pretty old model for how you get information about what's going on in the school committee and on the select board. You have to seek that information out. You have to go on the town website, you have to search to find minutes, you have to search to find agendas. I just don't think that's consistent with how people get information these days. I think we need to be much more proactive, and we need to send emails out, we need to post on social media, we need to, we need to bring things into the modern way that people communicate and recognize that not everybody's going to pick up the Long Meadow news and read the Long Meadow news. That's a wonderful place to get information, but that's not where everybody is. So, I think we need to modernize how we do it. I'm not sure exactly how we would do it, but I think, you know, we can look to what superintendent is doing and trying to get more information out proactively, and I think we need to, to, we need to really look at that as a committee, because right now, we're not doing a great job of communicating. We expect people to come and find us, we need to get out where people are.
Jamie?
Yep, I completely agree. I mean, and I think one area where the, from a school committee member, where we have great opportunities, really meet with the administrators and learning how they're communicating out, because there's a lot of communications coming from the schools, having a student at Williams, as well at Center. We get a significant amount of communication from those schools that is absolutely fabulous. They provide a lot of background, a lot of detail. From the school committee's standpoint, we're kind of a little bit disjointed in that way as to sometimes we provide background information, sometimes our information falls within each of the schools. But I think we could be more consistent and use some of their platforms or mediums that are maybe more consistent with today's society. So, I agree with you too, Kevin.
Suzie?
Communication can never, there can never be enough, right? I mean, but it has to also go two ways. So, we, we, as a, as a school committee, I think, need to do a better job in seeking out the information from the community, especially, you know, opinions on different matters that are coming before the school committee, so that we can take all of those different opinions into account as we're, as we're moving forward. I'm, I'm pleased to see that there have been some community conversations that are happening, the superintendent is, is moving on those related to a couple of incidents that have happened, you know, at the high school. There's a, there's a conversation on equity and, and inclusion that happening this, at the, middle of this week. And, and those are the kinds of conversations, because a lot of people want to help. They want to be part of the, the solution. We see parents in our schools every single day, and so, there's, there's a lot of people who want to join and want to help. So, the, the more two-way communication we can have, I agree that, you know, we need to do a better job of communicating, but I think seeking out the information and the, and the perspectives of folks is, is also critical to the process. So, whether it's listening tours at, at each of the schools, whether it's, you know, special theme nights, like the, like the superintendent's having this week, I think there's, there's all sorts of ways, especially using social media to gather some input as well.
Okay. Thank you. Kevin, we're going to start with you on this one. How would you, and, Tim, you would answer as if you were on the school committee.
Yes.
How would you, how would, do you measure success as a body, as a school committee?
I think if, if we're collaborating well, and we're working toward our goals. I mean, I feel like in the two months that I've been on the committee, I think we've been highly successful. We've been listening to teachers, we've been listening to students, we've been listening to the administrative staff, we've been asking a lot of questions. All three of us are brand-new to the, to the school committee, so we don't have a lot of background of what's going on, and I think we all feel very willing, and it's open and acceptable to ask a lot of questions. So, to me, I think we're being successful right now because we are asking questions, we have open minds, we bring our experience, and we ask what, how we can help. And I think, to me, the, the model for the board working well is if we're all collaborating, and we understand what our goals are. And I think we all understand our goals are to help our students succeed, recognize we're doing a great job, we can do better, we can continue to improve. Talk to our administrative team and say, "What are the issues you're seeing?", and try to figure out how we can help them achieve those goals. To me, I think the collaboration is the key, and that's where we've been over the two months I've been on the committee, where we're all working together, all willing to listen, and we're all striving just to continue to improve what is already a great school system.
Okay. Thank you. Jamie?
Yep. So, and I agree with a lot of what Kevin has said. Since I've been on the school committee, and I know Kevin and Suzie is as well, there's been a very high level of debate, thinking, and just talking through things. And I think, I think the thing you need whenever you're on a committee, being on both the corporate committee, and I was also on the Western Mass Food Bank Committee, you have a wide range of people with different backgrounds, it's healthy. You don't want all the same types of people with same backgrounds working on a board on behalf of an entire community. So, I think we have a very diverse group in there, and the thing that everyone is doing is they're stopping, they're listening, and then they're talking. I think from a collaboration, and from a thoughtfulness, and almost politeness, and etiquette with the way you should interact with folks, we're working at a pretty, pretty high level there, and really just, just being a good collaborative group that's willing to say, "No, I don't agree with you", and really have that debate, but stop and listen whenever the opposing side of an argument is willing to say something and debate you on it.
Thank you. Suzie?
Yeah, I, I agree with everything about, you know, the collaboration. Teams get work done that are highly effective and efficient. And so, there's a, you know, having that understanding, having that back and forth, having that open dialogue, I think, is so critical. It can be stymied sometimes, especially when you're, you know, you're working on a team that has to be meeting public all the time, right? But at the same time, I think that's where you, you generate that level of respect that I think, I, I know that I see on the school committee. I, I think the other, you know, the other way is, we, you're always looking at where are you in terms of your goals. So, if we're all in agreement and have consensus on, you know, where we're headed, then we have to do our best to measure. And, you know, I think we're, I think we're entering an era where the measurement of goals relative to school districts is, is going into a different direction. I mean, yes, we have to look at, you know, the traditional measures of test scores and things like that, but we also need to think about, are kids happy? Are kids healthy? And, I mean, all of us want our kids to succeed, but not at the expense of their mental health and their physical health. So, I think we need to, you know, consider all of those pieces as we, as we measure what it is we're here to accomplish. And, and I know that, you know, the, the school committee is, is, has their eyes on that, the superintendent with his goals have, have the eyes on that. So, it's our job to really use that, those collaboration skills to keep our eyes on the prize, and, and have that open dialogue and debate.
Thank you. Tim?
Yeah, I think that comes back to a little bit more, I thought your question was about measuring, how do you measure this success of the school committee? And I think part of it is understanding, you know, what are the strengths of the school system now, and, and, you know, making sure that those are built upon, that finding out where the weaknesses are and adding, you know, bolstering those aspects, so that as a whole, all of the school system is delivering, you know, both the education the students need, but like you said, preparing the students to be, you know, citizens of, you know, their communities as well as they go forward. So, I think the key is understanding where, where you're at, what are the things that are important to deliver to those students, and, you know, measuring those, and then seeing, does the committee add to all of those areas, you know, and not, not cause the schools to back up in some area.
Okay. Thank you. Jamie, we're going to start with you on this one. What would you, in just your opinion, it doesn't have to be as a board, but what's your, what, what do you think is the top priority for our schools, you know, immediate concerns in the maybe three to five years out? What are the things that you're going to be looking at as a member of the school committee?
I think, I think a lot of things that are on top of folks' mind, number one, are the state of the schools. You know, there's been a lot of talk within town about the middle schools, and there's going to have to be a large discussion, and the town is really going to have to provide the direction. The school committee obviously will provide some insight, but overall, the town's going to, you know, vote one way or another as to what we do with the state of the schools. I think another big topic is, you know, that we've been discussing within school committee is overall safety of the schools, you know, getting up to that, you know, next, you know, tier of, you know, things within the schools that are appropriate from a camera, from a, you know, with regards to footage within the school, with outside the school, from a safety standpoint, is another big topic that I think we've got to continue to address as a community to ensure that there's full safety with what all of us as parents would want. The, the last point, I would just say, just from what Suzie had said on the other thing, it's just really the overall health and well-being of students, I think, is one of those things. And there's a lot of ways to address that, there's a lot of people within town who have differing opinions, and I think we've got to hear those opinions. There's a lot of different ways to solve that problem or work on that problem, I guess is a better way to say it, and, and really get our students in a better place with regards to their mind, body, as well as the grades, and how we all were evaluated whenever we were in the school system.
Thank you. Suzie?
I think one of the biggest priorities, I, I agree, is figuring out where, where we are with our middle school facilities, and I, I know the school committee has worked on that for a number of years to submit the statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Board's authority. We've done it again, and, you know, we're certainly hoping that that will turn around for us. But added to that, if we're faced at a certain point, you know, we're going to have to make a decision, what we do with the schools, if it comes to a point where they're being maintained well right now, but when you see what's, what's actually going on there, it's not an ideal situation for educating children. So, we're going to have to make a decision that, you know, could cost the town more money, and we know that that's another significant issue facing the town, is the tax ceiling. And so, that was a, a significant issue raised by the select board during our interviews, and, and obviously, it is an issue. We, we have to address it. And so, you know, from a, how much can we, how, how much can we afford perspective in terms of reaching our goals, we also have to, you know, be mindful of that, of that financial piece. From a long-term priority perspective, I think in terms of, you know, curriculum and programming, and, you know, obviously, I already mentioned the mental health and, and physical health piece, I do think that's important. But I think another thing that's important, that I think can contribute to solving some of those issues, is finding multiple pathways for students to, you know, earn that diploma. And what I mean is, how do we open up the different avenues for, of passion and, and interest in, in our middle school and in our high school, so that kids have many different opportunities, they can go out to businesses and learn on, on the spot, you know, the different kind of career paths they're, they're interested in. So, I think that's a critical issue moving forward, so that we engage all of our students in, in career work.
Tim?
Well, I think that one thing that's, we talk about a lot in higher ed, is the fact that, especially in my field, accounting, you know, technological change is advancing at a very rapid state, and the fact is that, you know, our instruction of students at all levels does not advance near as quickly. And to some degree, then you have to back up and think, we, we've got to, we've got to think about a different model for how we treat students, and we need to teach them how to be lifelong learners, and motivate them of how important it is to go in and dig and learn things on their own. It's not just what we can teach them in the classroom, but all the things that they can put their energy towards and do outside the classroom. And I would say, you know, that's an important thing to keep in mind, and, and these other issues, these kind of structural issues are important, but we have to make sure we don't get too distracted by those, away from the fact is that we're there to educate students for the future. And, you know, we can't let the facilities get in the way of that on the negative side, but we also can't let our planning for the facilities get in the way of us making necessary changes in how students grow.
Thank you. Kevin?
Yeah, I mean, the students have to be at, at the forefront of anything we talk about when we talk about planning. The student experience is, is critical. We're doing a good job, we can do better. We've definitely seen some really neat things going on in the schools, just in the time we've been on the school committee. We had a great presentation from the robotics club, right? And that was something that, that's an extracurricular activity. They're not getting credit for it, but they're getting amazing experience. And that's a, a club that didn't exist five years ago, so that's a really neat innovation that's going on. We were at Glenbrook School for a team-building event, and we saw the Makerspace and the Maker Projects that they're doing at Glenbrook, again, something that didn't exist five years ago. So, I think looking for that innovation and seeing how our students are getting some really cool experiences that may be outside the traditional curriculum, and trying to make that possible and foster that. So, I think thinking about the students is first. The second thing has to be attracting or retaining talent. We have to get the best teachers, we have to get the best administrators, and I think that's something that we're always thinking about on the school committee, is finding ways to attract those talented people, and then getting them to stay in Long Meadow, and recognize this is the best school district, if you want to be in Western Mass, and we can compete with anywhere in the state. And obviously, the middle, middle school is something we have to really focus on. But I think those first two things have to always be first, and then we worry about things like the middle school, which clearly is an issue that we're going to be addressing over the next, you know, three to five years.
Okay. Thank you. So, Suzie, you hit on this a little bit. There's my next question, because we're getting close to like a half an hour here, so, there's two more questions, and this one here is about the tax rate. There's a task force formed a couple of years ago between the school committee and the select board, because we're going to hit a $25 levy ceiling, and then we'll have to make cuts at that point in time for, if something doesn't change. And, and from the discussions, it's more we're looking towards redoing the law, or having a home rule exemption to get that, get over that. The reality is, we have about three to four years before we hit that, that cliff. It's not a wall, it's a cliff, actually. So, what, and seeing that salaries are 75 to 80% of our, of overall budget, school budget, it's just the way it is, including benefits and things like that, how do we, how do you handle that as a member of the school committee, as you're looking, I just asked the goals for three to five years, right? And we got this thing hanging over us. How, what's the balance there? How can we plan with that kind of hanging over us, and assuming that if it does pass, that's awesome, but if it doesn't pass, we got to, we got to do something, right? We still got to deliver services.
Sure. Sure. Yeah, it's, it's not an easy answer. I mean, there's, there's no two ways about it, because we want to provide the best services to our kids, and, and that comes in human capital. So, as we look at that human capital and understand that that is the biggest portion, one of the things that, you know, trending-wise is, is somewhat optimistic, I guess, is the fact that our enrollment has trended down in the, in the younger grades. So, I think through like grade four, we're actually trending lower enrollment in, in those grades. So, we've actually realized some savings in, you know, just through attrition because of, of lower enrollments. That being said, you know, it's not great to have, you know, kind of a mobile workforce either, right? So, you may, you may have a jump in, in one year, but right now, the trend K to four is looking like it might help the problem a little bit. The challenge is that we have to then look at the rest of our budget to figure out, okay. And as a superintendent, I had the ability to do this, but it's, it's challenging. You have to be mission-driven in everything that you spend. So, if, if our mission is to ensure that we're improving the experience of every single Long Meadow student through giving them all of those different opportunities and pathways, helping them build their learning profile from, from a young age all the way up, and getting deep into learning versus just learning just in case, then we need to make sure that our budgeting is, is supported by that, that we're not paying for things that, that don't meet that. That's not easy. You have to make some difficult decisions and some sacrifices, but at the same time, you know, you do have to make those tough decisions. I, I see us working, you know, having to work collaboratively on how that's going to all unfold.
Okay. Thank you. Tim?
Yeah, I think that's an excellent point, that you, you've got to identify the things that are important for us to provide, and then you have to figure out, well, how much does it cost us to provide that thing? And, you know, then it's that relationship between the benefit that something provides to the students, and what it costs to provide that, and then eliminating some things that where that, that ratio is off, because that's the only real way to go about it. Otherwise, you know, you, you may cut costs in a way that's going to really harm the service you provide. So, you've got to look at all those things, and, and it's not going to, if there's a real cut in money, it's not, it's never going to be easy. So, you have to be prepared and know exactly what is it, again, that is important that we provide, how do we prioritize those things, and then, you know, how much are each of those things costing us, and where do we have some room? Doesn't mean that it's really, if, if we didn't have to, we wouldn't do it, but where do we have some room to make cost cuts if, if we are forced to make those?
Thank you. Kevin?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we have to start by talking to our state representatives. We have to have Eric Lesser and Brian Ash, we have to talk to them and figure out, how can we help them in arguing at the state level to try to get these laws changed? That has to be part of our strategy. We also have to work very collaboratively with the select board. I feel like right now, we have a good relationship with the select board, and we need to talk to them about, how are we going to do this? And I agree, if we wake up four years from now, and we fall off the cliff, we failed. We need to plan, we need to talk about how we're going to do this. The other thing that I'm encouraged by, and again, just in our short time on the school committee, when we've looked at how the negotiations have gone for contracts, I feel like the, the school committee and the, the administrative team have worked really hard to try to give like the school committee and the administrative team have worked really hard to try to give reasonable raises within what is possible in this fiscal climate. And I think that's a really important thing, and it's important for the town to know that, that we're working really hard to recognize and retain our teachers and our administrators and our staff, but to do it in a responsible, fiscally responsible way. And I feel like that's been something that has happened and will continue to push for.
Good, thank you. Jamie?
Yep, and I agree. I think the state reps, I think, you know, it would do us all justice to at least let our voice be heard. If you have an opinion one way or another, I think it is time to at least let them know well in advance of it. Just going back to your question, you're 100% right, you know, just rounding numbers. You have a $38 million school budget, and $30 million of it is our teachers, our administrators, that do a fantastic job on, for us and for our kids. So it's one of those things that we are managing the costs very conservatively, like Kevin has said, where you have two groups that are really working together and minimizing the COA adjustments over the course of time. But, you know, anybody can do the math, you know, there's only a point in time to where you can, you can only go out so many years until it becomes an issue. So I think getting four, five, six years ahead of this issue, whatever projections you wanna use, would be very prudent. I think it would be very prudent to push on our legislators, but it's also prudent and very fiscally conservative what's been happening within the school committee and within the school committee budget, to try to maintain those and prolong that period of time that we have.
Thank you. This one here is an open question. We'll start with Kevin. This is my softball. Since there might be something on your mind that I didn't ask, you've got two minutes to get something across, you wanna get across that I didn't ask you that is on your mind, and we'll start with you, Kevin.
Yeah, I mean, I would just say that it's been, it's been fun being on the school committee, right? I mean, I feel like it's been a really great opportunity to work with people who are really passionate about their jobs, working with the administrative team, working with Superintendent O'Shea, Sue Bertrand, Tom Maza. We have some really talented administrators in our town. We have great teachers in our town, and I think, to me, that's been the most exciting thing about being on the school committee, is just recognizing what those folks bring to the table every day, how they go above and beyond what we would expect of them. And then, it's been great fun having kids involved in the process. I really enjoyed, as I mentioned, the robotics presentation, but also, the high school students come in quarterly and talk about what's going on at the high school. They give us their input from their perspective, and I think that's wonderful, to have the students come in and talk to us about what's going on. We also heard from some elementary school kids who pioneered recycling in their school. They got mentioned in the National Scholastic, you know, newsletter. And so there's great stuff going on, and I really love that on the school committee, we're celebrating that, and not just talking about the day-to-day business that we have to do, but we're also recognizing great things that are going on across the district.
Good, thank you, Jamie.
Yeah, absolutely. Two big things that I've absolutely loved the experience of being a part of the school committee. One of them is the administrators and the kids who come in. We have a lot of very talented administrators, teachers, whatever, we go up and down the line, and they've done amazing things. They come in and present some things that they're doing within their group, whatever school they may be at, and just really, really pushing the envelope and coming up with different ways of doing things within their classroom, but even outside their classroom. But on a more important note, the number one reason why I've truly enjoyed it, my, the experience with my kids and them watching and understanding and getting involved and being a part of the experience, whether it's putting out signs for me, or whether it's watching me on TV and giving me feedback, they, what they're learning from this is like what Susie said, you can learn a lot outside of a classroom. What they're learning here from a civics standpoint is fabulous, and it's the number one reason why I'm so excited to be able to do it.
Thank you. Susie?
So, part of it is, for me, I mean, just honestly, I've missed being in the fray of a school district, quite frankly. I never knew I would, I would miss it so much, but, you know, no, honestly, I do enjoy all aspects of educating children. I enjoy the, this side of it, too. It's obviously different than the day-to-day running of a school in a district. But what I think I like the most about it is the opportunity to work with a diverse group, and that meaning the administrators and teachers as well. I think the other thing is the openness everybody has to ideas. Nobody's sitting there set in a, you know, mindset. We're all considering what everybody has to say and being open to anything's possible, and how can we versus why can't we, or why it can't happen. So I really appreciate that mentality. I think the other thing, too, is I'm very passionate about schools. I'm very passionate about education. I'm very passionate about kids turning into successful adults. Part of that success is teaching kids how to be good neighbors and be happy and healthy. And so I can't stress enough that our schools have to be places where they learn those key skills for navigating a very complex world, but they also have to do it, hopefully, with, you know, feeling good about themselves and going into our world equipped with anything that they need to succeed.
Thank you. Tim?
So I would say, one thing that's really, you know, I've seen tonight certainly is that these guys are, you know, doing a great job, I'm sure, for our, for our community on the school committee. And I, you know, it's something that I would love to help and serve in, so I guess I see myself, if it's in this good of hands, then I just know the community, know that I'm there to be a, you know, bench warmer if needed, if, you know, there's some reason that we need, you know, some new person on the, on the committee. I'm happy to serve. You know, and the thing that I didn't get to say earlier, that I feel like, another thing I bring to the table is, I do have a fourth grader here, but I have two children that are in university. And in their, you know, school careers, we've lived in several different communities and states and lived in a different country for a while. My children have done Spanish immersion and French immersion school and had a lot of different experiences. And not that I would ever wanna come into a situation and say, hey, this is how we should do it, but I bring a lot of ideas of things I've seen that work and don't work in different environments. And so I would bring those ideas and experiences to the table, as well as just a willingness to work for the community and, you know, make good decisions. And so I would appreciate that opportunity.
So now we have our close. We have a minute and a half. I know that was, but now, we got an election on June 11th. Right, that's June 11th?
Yes, June 11th.
And you guys got a minute and a half each to talk to the voters, so we'll start with you, Kevin.
Well, I mean, it's just been an honor to serve on the school committee for the last couple of months. It's really been wonderful working with the other members of the board. It's been a great experience. I've enjoyed being the school committee rep to the high school, on the policy subcommittee, on the wellness subcommittee, and just learning a lot of things that I didn't know. I have a lot more left to learn. I feel really grateful that a bunch of people have encouraged me to do this and supported me, including, you know, my son's high school classmates who've been pushing me to continue to do this. So I feel like I've had a lot of support. I wanna thank everybody for that and hope I can continue to get support. I think my background of having kids who've gone through the system, I have a lot of experience there. I've spent a lot of my time over the last probably eight to 10 years with the Long Meadow softball program, and that's been a wonderful thing for me to give back to the town. Now that I'm not coaching softball, I think this is an opportunity for me to continue to serve the town. I think my background as an educator at Smith College and as a leader in some of the leadership positions at Smith have given me a bunch of experience that I think I can use to hopefully continue to improve the school system. So I encourage you to get out and vote, and hopefully, you'll vote for me. Thank you.
You, Jamie?
Thank you very much for having us. I am also very grateful for the opportunity that I've had so far on the school committee, and really, I'm asking for your vote to continue for the next three years on behalf of the citizens of Long Meadow on the school committee. I really have had an absolute blast learning, but both, and giving, within this school committee as a member of the finance subcommittee within the school committee. I've had the opportunity, was elected to share that committee, and have really gotten the opportunity to jump into the numbers, look at things, and really talk through different aspects of the overall school budget, but also bring it back to the overall committee and learn from them, more from policy side, from an educator side. The reason you vote for me is really, from a outsider's standpoint, I bring a skillset that I think most that are vying for these positions do not have, and really, a different set of experiences and outlooks on many facets of life, both education and outside of education. And I think I would lend it very well, over the course of time, to, you know, give that opposite point of view from the other folks within the committee and really provide, provide an opportunity for Long Meadow to continue to grow a wonderful school system that it already has. So once again, Jamie Hench, I would love your vote on June 11th.
Thank you. Susie?
Thank you again for having us. This was a great opportunity to talk to the voters. And, you know, I'm here because I've, I've had experience in education, I've, all the way up through the superintendency, this is, while this is my first go at being on the other side with the school committee, I see it as a collaborative experience. So to support the administration and the work that they wanna do is critical for our school system to improve and to go beyond improvement, but really, truly to transform. Every school system out there is facing a crisis right now, and the crisis is that many schools that have not made the shift to a more project-based, a problem-based instructional model are falling behind in terms of making sure that our students have the skills in order to navigate life. And when I say navigate life, that includes college and career. It also includes all of the complex problems that, quite frankly, we're going to leave them with. And so we need to, we need to collaborate, we need to come together and support one another in helping our school system improve and transform into that system that allows for our students to grow and thrive and really gain the skills necessary for that complex world. I've had the experience of actually changing a school system significantly, and I hope that I'll get a chance to support this school system in improving with your vote on June 11th.
Thank you. Tim, bringing home?
So as I've mentioned, I bring, you know, as well, some practical experience and some academic experience and knowledge of how to manage, you know, activities of a group. And I think that, you know, I could be a really useful person on the school committee to help the committee make decisions and, you know, do the things that are good for the community. And so I hope that you'll consider giving me that opportunity when you go to the polls.
Thank you. So first, thank you for coming, because this was great. You guys are definitely speaking with passion. It's awesome to see. Anybody who says being on the school committee is fun, hasn't gone to Big Y and spent 45 minutes in the alley, but no, that's awesome. You guys did a fantastic job. I wanna thank LCTV for hosting us and getting this information out to you. There are, there is a one-year term, there's four people running for three seats, and that's Gianna Allentuck, Tim Mitchell, Kevin Shea, and Armon Ray. And then the three-year term, you get to elect two, and there's three people running. It's Susan Bell, Jamie Hench, and Kevin Rysek. June 11th, the polls open, I believe, at 8 o'clock for our town elections, and if you don't vote, you can't complain. So that's the stipulation. So get out there and vote. You have a lot of choices and good choices, so please get out and vote, and thank you for watching. Have a great day. Thank you.